Well, I think everybody's here now. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if we can start off with a roll call.
Brett Austin.
Present.
Michael Best.
Present.
Lisa Ellison.
Here.
Thompson Forbes.
Here.
Sharon Gray.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Here.
Rita Jackson Gilbert. Minnie Stewart. Minnie Johnson Stewart. Steve Little. Charles McLaughlin.
Here.
And Michael White.
Some habits are hard to break. I'd like to start off with a prayer and our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Little, will you say the blessing, please?
Let's pray. Our Father, my God, we thank you, Lord, for the many blessings of life that you bestow upon us. We pray that in this meeting, that your hand might be upon us, that each and everything that is said and done to your pleasure. Our Father, we just pray and thank you for each one that is here. We thank you for your safety. Our Father, we just thank you for safe travel. And our just pray that you might be in this meeting. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now it's time to approve the minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions to make? Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the last meeting be approved.
I second that. I second that.
All right. We have a motion to approve the minutes as printed and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. And at this time, I'd like to open public addresses to the board. Do we have any public addresses to this board? As of now, I have no public address requests to address the board. I'd like to close the public addresses to the board. Moving on to administrative matters, Mr. Jonas Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. First administrative, or the only administrative matter we have tonight is that the Board of Commissioners has appointed a new planning board member, him being Steve Little. Some of y'all may know Steve. He served on the planning board in the past. And he was appointed to fill a partial term. And that partial term will expire on September the 30th of 2025, although he will be eligible if he chooses to be reappointed after that partial term has expired. So welcome, Mr. Little, back. Thank you for your willingness to serve on this board and look forward to working with you. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, on that matter.
Okay.
And Tab's going to swear him in at this time.
I state your name.
I, Steve Little.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support.
That I do solemnly affirm that I will support.
And maintain the Constitution.
And maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
Of office as a member of the planning board.
Of office of the planning board.
There you go.
Good deal. Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome back, Mr. Little.
Thank you, sir.
We now have planning matters. Mr. Jonas Hill, once again.
So tonight, the item for planning matters is regarding the proposed mega site. Some of you guys may have seen in the news, we've done several informational sessions regarding the mega site throughout the community. I felt it was appropriate to bring Josh Lewis in to give the same presentation that we have done throughout the county, just to give you the background as to what a mega site is. I will tell you that we have received a rezoning application from the property owner. You will hear that next month. So tonight is just for informational purposes. It is not asking for any action to be taken. We will go through the public hearing process of advertising, notifying property owners, and that item will come before you at next month's meeting. But wanted to give the board an opportunity to hear a little bit about what a mega site is, so that you're well-prepared to make a decision next month. Just to go over a little bit about mega sites, they are defined as a parcel of 1,000 acres or more, and is intended to be used for industrial development. Pitt County site is one of only seven that were chosen for the state of North Carolina or by the state of North Carolina. And again, I have Josh Lewis here tonight from, he's the CEO of the Eastern North Carolina Alliance. So I'll turn it over to Josh to update you on what a mega site is.
Okay. Thank you for having me. You want to, I think you can come up here and give this presentation. You've been to a couple of these. So again, my name is Josh Lewis. I'm president and CEO of the Greenville Eastern North Carolina Alliance. We are a public-private partnership between the county, city, GUC, excuse me, GUC, ECU, ECU Health, and about 110 private businesses here in Pitt County. Primary focus of this organization has been on the business recruitment side, business expansion, product development, such as the shell building we're putting up in the park. Of course, the two major announcements that you've seen over the last two years with NEPRO and Boviet. Boviet being, you know, a project that purchased an existing building, but we also dealt with the real estate on the back end. Of course, NEPRO being a joint partnership between the city and county. So for us, it's extremely important that we develop the product for the future, so that the community and the county can be successful, excuse me, in attracting companies over the next decades, right? And so we have been a part of this process of the mega site research and development side, once we knew that the state of North Carolina was going to put some funds into the program. So I'm going to talk through this. There's a lot of slides. I've kind of consolidated a bunch of different presentations from the public comment, public information sharing sessions. And I'm trying to give you the, you know, the meat of what we're doing. Otherwise, you'd be here listening to me for about an hour. So again, he mentioned what a mega site is, but why is it important? So the state of North Carolina has been very successful over the past five to 10 years attracting major projects. Those projects being some that you've probably heard about, Wolf Speed, Toyota, multi-billion dollar projects. And those landed on sites that were in development for 10 or 20 years. You're talking about sites of 1,000 acres, 1,500 acres, 2,000 acres. So the mega site readiness program was put together in response to running out of that type of site and development. Again, we mentioned 1,000 acres or more, but an example is, again, in Randolph-Gilford area, where they announced Toyota, which is bringing a $13.5 billion investment and 5,000 jobs. This was a partnership between the city, Randolph County, and Guilford County in order to get that site in a position that could attract a project like Toyota. So what happens now? You know, well, then, back in 2022, the EDPNC, which is the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, put out a bid. So they asked firms to come in and submit bids on a process of identifying the next generation of mega sites. Ultimately, they selected JLL and Timmins Group and a third party with Nexon Pruitt to kind of support the project. And they wanted to identify the top five sites in the state of North Carolina, which the state could invest hundreds of millions of dollars in getting the sites ready for project development. So Timmins Group is a firm, that's an engineering firm, that was, you know, part, JLL, if you don't know, is a brokerage kind of commercial real estate firm. They help companies find new locations when they're searching for the next site or building for their operation. I've worked closely with JLL for 15 years or more, and they are very, very experienced with helping on the site location side. So they partner with Timmins Group, who is an engineering firm, who has helped localities identify land for potential industrial development. They've assisted companies, but they worked a lot of projects and they've brought a lot of investment to a lot of places. So JLL, I mentioned, they helped firms identify the next site for them to put their manufacturing operations or whatever it is that they are looking to accomplish. They utilize the same process that they help, that they have with companies in order to identify what a mega site might look like and how would they score it compared to other sites. So across the state, the state solicited counties, there's 100 counties in North Carolina, to submit sites of which they wanted to be evaluated. So lots of, lots of different sites across the state. I think Pitt County submitted two, one in the northern part of the county and the other in the southern part of the county. So all 30 were evaluated with that criteria, you know, identifying, you know, utilities, road access, site development, soils, like all the things that go into deciding if a piece of property is worth development. They also analyzed the last 60 mega site projects that they could find, understand what type of projects are landing on these properties. So that helps them score and evaluate the properties. They range, you know, I think you see here, there were 60 that they evaluated. It's probably hard for you to see the graph on the bottom, but a lot of those bubbles you'll see in that bottom graph represent automotive projects. The size of the circle is the amount of employment, and the higher up, the Y-axis, the more the investment. But overall, they put together like a range of what you would expect a mega site would demand from a, from an industry, depending on the sector. So you'll see here, you know, these range from $100 billion semiconductor-type projects to food and beverage, automotive. But they tried to get a profile of what it might look like. They looked at all the available mega sites across the country on size to understand where they were located. You'll see North Carolina is now absent of sites that meet a certain qualification of readiness to attract those projects. And so, and then you looked at Pitt County, and they said, okay, well, this is what's submitted. This is what a site might look like in this part of the county. Again, they were looking for 1,000 acres. And why this site was selected as a top five, I know Jonas mentioned there being seven sites, but there was five new sites. They grouped in two mega sites that were kind of in development in order to get them some funds for infrastructure, for projects that were just recently announced, but there's really five raw sites. And why it was selected was because of some of the advantages that the site has in proximity to utilities, one owner, land assemblage, road access, all the things that you would look for from a cost perspective. So I just covered some of the site strengths. Again, access to ports, airports. And so the next real phase is, okay, identifying what are the needs of the site. So due diligence, understanding if the site is viable from an engineering perspective, or the soil is right, or, you know, can you get a road there? Can you get utilities there? How much does it cost? And they evaluated and compared us to some of the other sites, right? And for us, if you look at the, at the bottom line, which is the net, and this is order of magnitude, meaning they're just, they're guessing, they're guessing or estimating what it might cost based on each foot of utility, each foot of road, like trying to get an order of magnitude of cost. And you'll see that based on the location of the site, access to utilities, proximity to roads, and also the fact that GUC and the community has invested heavily in having access capacity with certain utilities, the total cost of development for the Pitt County site is drastically lower than a lot of the others that were identified. If you talk to folks at the state, you know, they might not say it out in public in front of the media, but they'll let you know that Pitt County, based on a developable opportunity, is probably the best opportunity that the state has to invest dollars and get a site up and viable in a short amount of time. Overall, what would it mean for us? You know, for the community? You have to take some guesses. And really, you take a profile, we talked about examining the 60 mega site projects, kind of getting a profile and average of the averages to say, okay, well, what'd it look like? Of those, you can expect about a $5 billion investment. If you're at the average, could you attract a project that's $1 billion, $2 billion? Of course. Could you attract one that's $10 billion? Of course. Can you attract a project that may pay $60,000 in average wages? Of course. Can you attract one that pays $100,000? Of course. We're just giving you an average of what you could expect from the economic impact. And you'll see that of this, you know, you're talking about potential in the $20 million, $30 million a year net tax revenues to the bottom line for the county. And that's just direct revenues. That's not taking into account the discretionary spending that comes from the jobs that multiplies and turns into local economy that gets trickled down. So overall, I just want to leave you with a, you know, kind of a profile. You're talking about tens of millions of dollars in excess net, you know, revenue to the local government and jobs and the tax revenues that come from the circulation of those wages that are paid out. Very, very, very impactful. So why invest? A lot of the things I just talked about. What you can expect, projects that were announced recently, Toyota's, the Wolf Speeds, Eli Lilly's, even projects that we are examining right now in the county. We've had several projects that we've submitted RFIs for. They're looking for hundreds, if not thousands, of acres of land. So what does it all mean for the mega site program? Understanding that this would not be pursued unless there was state funding involved, right? There's no way a county or city or a combination of county and city could invest the hundreds of millions of dollars needed to get a site like this up and ready. The only way, only reason why we're talking about it is there was a state program that put dollars in the pot for us to access, covering large amounts of the cost to develop. This includes acquisition costs. This includes utility runs. This includes the due diligence components. Now, there will be a match. There will be, there will have to be some type of city-county alliance, some type of local match to get these dollars. But you're talking about vast sums of state dollars in order to get this. And the route is, there's only five sites that can access the money, right? The five that were identified through the program, we feel like we're one of probably one to two, maybe three, that would actually carry out this thing to the finish line. And if we don't get the funds and we don't pursue those funds, there will be another site that will, right? So that is something to keep in mind. So program-wise, initial million dollars to get it off the ground, $10 million put in the pot to access for due diligence, engineering studies, all that stuff. $100 million currently sits in the site development fund. That's phase two. That's after you figure out if the land is viable, can you actually get a pad of 1,000 acres? Does it make sense for the state to invest another dollar in that site? Then you go to hard infrastructure costs. Phased, phased program. And just know that even $100 million might sound like a lot, but it's going to take hundreds of millions of dollars to get these sites project-ready. So I talked about some of this. I'll skip over. Again, we talked about what you could use the money for. Site acquisition, public infrastructure, onsite prep. Funding, what we're trying to accomplish, if this site were to move forward, there's a funding cycle which, that you have to kind of fall in line with, right? And there's a couple of things that we have to do locally. I'm going to get to that in just one second. I'll stay on the funding cycle. I'll repeat myself here in just a second. But to make it make sense, there's a funding cycle. The only way to access the funds is to have everything in order at the local level. There's a couple of key things. You have to have it zoned properly. They're not going to invest in a site that's not for industrial purposes, that's zoned for non-industrial purposes. It wouldn't make sense for the state of North Carolina. You have to have agreements in order to have utilities run to the site. This is a non-city site. Just two weeks ago, the city agreed to run sewer to the site without annexation. GUC voted to approve it on their side. The city voted to approve it on their side. Now that that part is complete, rezoning has to take place. And then after that's complete, we have to have control of the property, meaning we have to negotiate with the property owner and come to terms on option agreements for purchase. From that point, you go into the funding application process, which we submit directly to the EDPNC and the Department of Commerce. They review the applications. They review the request, and then they would be the ones to decide when money is dispersed. So, again, a little bit about the site. Orientation-wise, this shows the pad. A little bit zoomed in here. What we're currently looking at is a 3,300-acre area. Of course, we wouldn't take down 3,300 acres for a project. We're looking to study 3,300 acres, understand if a 1,000-acre section of that property would make sense. We also know that a new road would be needed to access the site. Four-lane highway would be what would be pursued. Working with the property owner, they have access to 11. The idea would be hopefully to only run the road through the property that is owned by the one landowner, which is Warehouser, who you will receive the rezoning request from. And you'll see this, I don't have a pointer, I don't have a way to orient you, but to the north side, you'll see the white lines that run up to the northeast of the site. That would be the access point for a four-lane highway. Again, trying to centralize it in the site to try to have minimal impact on surrounding areas. What we do know is that it would have to shut down a road, Saintsville Road, that cut, that traverses the middle of the pad. Other than that, we're looking at establishing a conservation zone around the property. 100-foot right now, as was being discussed, could be increased. Also showing that proximity to communities, right? We're trying to avoid any disruption, if possible, to folks that are currently living in the area. Now, if you were, this is the lower 1,000 acres or 1,500 acres. If you were to completely develop this site, again, if I was standing in front of a screen, I'd point out a few things. This is what it could potentially look like. Now, this is multiple projects. This isn't one user. The one user that we used as, which was the BMW plant in South Carolina, we placed right in the middle. So this site here is what we're talking about. Can they see that cursor? Okay. That helps. Again, this would be what would happen if 1,000 acres, that's 1,000 acre pad, if the entire lower area were developed, it could look something like this. Again, these were just concepts we put together to show scale of magnitude. And then, in this area, to give you another sense of scale, where my cursor is, this general area, again, we just mirrored what is Thermo Fisher. If you know the scale of Thermo Fisher, you'll understand how large that facility is, and that gives you a little sense of what we're talking about. Again, it's conceptual. If the future property were to be developed, you could continue with the four-lane road. You could have auxiliary uses. You could have community development. It would really just depend on what took place at the pad.
Josh.
I don't know rules about that. Questions?
So Josh, if you would back up just a minute, can you show me again, where's, where's the road and what did you say about Saintsville Road? You mentioned that.
So this would be a four-lane here to the kind of northeast, access off 11. Currently, conversation with DOT would be, it'd have to be a graded interchange coming off, heading this way. Saintsville Road currently has a two-lane road that traverses the property here.
But did you make a statement? Something happened? What happens to that?
I said, if that pad is in the current location of the concept, then that, that road would dead-end into the four-lane highway. There's been some conversations about concerns about access to Bradley Road. What we've shared with folks is that when we put these, or had these concepts put together, we were talking about scale. We've all agreed locally that, you know, you don't have to access Bradley Road. You know, that is, that is the position of the local community. You can have multiple access points off of the four-lane highway. You can come in different ways. Again, this was conceptual. We had several of those conversations at some of the public information sessions.
Josh, I have a question. Have you ever talked to the landowner of this?
Excuse me, sorry.
Have you come to an agreement?
Come to an agreement? And what I'm interested in, if y'all had talked to him early and made some kind of arrangements, if y'all haven't, how can we rezonate?
So the, so the application you will receive for the June meeting is coming from Warehouser, who is the property owner of the 8,000, it's an 8,700-acre parcel by itself. They're going to come in and ask for a rezoning request for a lower 3,300-acre area. That is the area that we would focus on studying and carrying out the due diligence, to understand where within that 3,300 acres might 1,000-acre contiguous pad make sense. So yeah, the property owner, which is unique about this property, there's one property owner. Of all the other sites in the state, you're talking about dozens, if not, you know, 100 property owners in some instances, that you would have to do land assembly. It's very unique here, and you have a property owner who was actually studying their property before we contacted them about this potential program for, for other purposes. You know, they've been harvesting trees on there for 100 years, you know? So they're, they've been studying their own property for a while and had interest in the program, and they will actually be the request. It will not come from us or the, or the locality. Again, I don't know how I'm doing on time here. I talked about steps. The city must authorize GUC to extend sewer. They did that. The GUC board approved their side. Now it's coming into rezoning through the county. And then if that is successful and the county and the community would like to move forward, we will work with the property owner to get control of the property in order to access the funds. Timeline, currently, this was established a couple of months ago, currently right on schedule for when we would like to have decisions made in order to hit the funding cycle come fall that the Department of Commerce and EDP, and EDPNC have established. There is a website that was created in order to try to be as transparent as possible, Q&amp;A. It's a city website, so happy to leave the slide deck, and you can go to the site, where we have about 30 or 40 questions that have been asked, and we've provided answers to, and also maps and some of the things that you see within the presentation tonight, and a more robust presentation deck that included all the presentations from our partners during the public information systems sessions. So with that, I'll stop.
Does the board have any other questions at this time?
Go on, you had, you had a few of the public hearings.
Yeah. No, it's not a public hearing. But there's, there's going to be questions, okay? Because I'm glad you came through, because the start we had, I kept hearing 1,000 acres, okay? And then you just shared about the 3,300 acres that will be in the application, right?
Yeah, so no, it's been 3,300 from the get-go. Well, we said, what we said about mega site is, is you need to have 1,000 contiguous acres in order to qualify for the program, and it would be our position that we would only take down what is needed. So I think the, the rezoning application for the southern portion of the site, which gives us enough room to maneuver and place a pad wherever it might be viable.
And yes, Josh, there's probably other questions, but I do know that probably at the June meeting, there's going to be a lot of questions, okay? And a lot of comments, so the board will know also, just so you'll, just be aware that when it, when you look at that neighborhood, again, looking down Bradley Road, Saintsville Road, Highway 11, there are folks that are living there now and have a lifestyle and that are involved in a certain culture, that do have questions, how it's going to impact them and their lifestyle. So just be prepared. And I would maybe suggest and just request, and if need, at some point, make a motion. I know at the last board meeting of the planning board, you decided that as far as the field trips, that you wouldn't do those unless they were requested or something of importance were coming up. I personally think this one is of enough importance that you need to go on a field trip to see where you're talking about, who some of the taxpayers and homeowners and landowners might be impacted, and just to get a feel of what's happening. In fact, you'll see some already, I might say pro sign, what I want to say, negative signs already up, that I'm assuming that some landowners have put up about this project. So just want the board to be aware of what you'll be facing on the next call. And by the way, Josh, you did a, you did a great job. You're, you're good.
Condensing down.
Yeah, you're good.
Recognize Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, I realize that the application will be made by Warehouser. By the way, I worked at Warehouser and I left there 50 years ago to go to law school, or I would be presenting this. But I'd be, I'd be interested in Warehouser presenting the juxtaposition of existing neighborhoods so that we can deal with what you're talking about in a good way that is, you know, fair to the neighborhoods. But, because, you know, I have no idea how remote this tract is. And I think it would be instructive for us to know how all of that lays together, just like any other, well, the county, I'm sure that Jonas's staff will do that for us, but I just wanted to make that point.
And I'll respond briefly, that there currently are conceptual maps, that we have rings around the property that'll show you distance between neighborhoods and potential pad area. You'll also see in some concepts that will be brought forward, the conservation buffer, the 100-foot. But if you'll see my cursor, you'll see the neighborhood developments here, right? You'll see.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we don't see any.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we don't see any of the graphics. There you go. Now we do.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So, you'll see neighborhoods here, you'll see neighborhood here, and then, of course, Brawley Road, which, again, you know, folks came out to the public information sessions and had a lot of concerns about access to the site this way. Of course, you see the outline of the parcel as it exists here. Of course, these folks along this road came out and voiced concerns about, you know, access here, but overall, it's fairly good distance between existing residential, and there's some zone, excuse me, aerial footage from drones that shows the site, and there's also the ability to ride down and through here to get a sense, if you talk about field trips.
I would like to make a comment about the field trips. Mr. Little said that he would recommend we take a field trip. Sometimes those field trips are planned at times that are not convenient for us people that work full-time jobs, and I can personally say for myself that I have visited every site that has become before us. So, we do individually sometimes go to these sites to see them when we don't attend the field trips. So, we do ride around in the areas to see them.
And absolutely, we encourage you guys, if you're unable to, back when we were holding the field trips, to attend with that, to certainly ride by and familiarize yourself with the area. Hearing Mr. Little's comment, I think it's a good idea. In this case, as I said, we kind of, the board voted to not schedule set field trips, but I think in this case, this is exactly what I was referring to, in certain situations it might warrant having a field trip. So, if the board has enough interest, I will certainly be glad to have my staff get a van and hold a field trip. Before we stopped having the field trips, it was typically held the Monday before the planning board meeting. So, if you're interested in keeping that schedule, that will be June 16th. If there's enough interest, I can go ahead and get a motion from you guys, if you're interested in having one, to go ahead and set that up for June 16th in preparation for your meeting on the 18th.
I guess I'm on. I see the area that you're talking about, with, I'm sure their letters would go out so that the people that-
Absolutely. So, we have received the application for this rezoning request. We received it on-
Yesterday.
Yesterday. So, Eric has already looked into the notification of adjacent property owners. I will tell you that our ordinance requires us to notify individual property owners within five hundred feet of the area that's being requested for rezoning. Given the size of this staff, Eric and I have talked about it, and we are going to send it out to a thousand feet away. Eric ran the preliminary numbers, and I think it's three hundred and seventeen property owners that we'll send notifications out to. And it will also be publicized in the Daily Reflector, and I'm sure the news media outside of the public hearing will also have something in the newspaper about the rezoning request, given its size. So, we will ensure that we notify all the property owners, as well as posting signs on the site.
I think that would be a good idea, because the Daily Reflector, if you can find it, a lot of the people may not see it, and I think the letters would be-
Absolutely. And like I mentioned, we'll post signs on the property as well with our office number if they need to contact us.
I have a question for Josh. How much depends upon federal dollars for this project to get off the ground?
To my knowledge, none. I mean, I say that to my knowledge because DOT and four-lane highway, of course, states are always going to be impacted by federal dollars for transportation purposes, but directly for this project, there's nothing attached. The money that was put forward into the mega site fund was directly from the General Fund of North Carolina.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of Jonas, and just, you know, the overlay, like the red or pink, I'll call it overlay, you know, outside of the green area, you know, that touches Brawley Road and another place that comes close to Brawley Road, and I know that it's not the business of the planning board to discuss future transportation design, but it does seem to me that if our, that our approval should consider, you know, the effect on all neighborhoods, and therefore, we ought to be thinking about what that effect is. You know, in other words, that we don't open the door unwittingly to something that we don't really want to live with later, is all I'm saying.
Absolutely. And I think you'll hear more about those issues at the actual public hearing for the rezoning request. Yeah, we've heard those concerns from the community already, and as Josh mentioned, the consultant that's kind of preparing the documentation for the rezoning maybe didn't think through that process when they showed that access road on that concept plan. Again, this is just all conceptual at this point. We have no details. What I will advise the planning board, and we can get further in discussion when we actually hear the request, is we, any site plans that we get, we will coordinate with NC DOT, and I would venture to say that they probably would not favor it highly if there was a road coming out on Brawley Road for the industrial traffic. And as Josh has mentioned, in some of the public meetings that we've had, the, should this request be approved, the large trucks are not going to choose to come down Brawley Road to access this facility. They're going to be coming off of Highway 11, off of that interchange and taking that four-lane road, because time is money for those industries. So, but yes, we'll cover that.
Right. And I think, Josh, I mean, Jonas, that, you know, I don't want to, you know, paint with too broad of a brush, but, you know, most uses are not really that obnoxious if they're far enough away from living spaces. And, you know, so, but traffic is obnoxious.
Yeah. And I will also tell you guys, as part of the rezoning request that they've submitted, they've also submitted a text amendment to accompany that. That text amendment is seeking a conservation buffer. Our ordinance currently does not have that type of language in it. They have proposed language to allow a conservation buffer around the perimeter of the site so that it can't be developed for buildings. In other words, it has to be left in its natural state to provide that additional buffer. So, I think they have tried to put a lot of thought into it and address that concern. So, we'll get into more details on that proposal at next month's meeting with the request.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's a, if we assume that the proposal goes forward and everything, you know, that we go through our approval process, what is the timeline for, or is there a timeline set now for due diligence for that money to be requested, once the due diligence process goes forward, and then whatever the approval would be for the mega site to move forward in full capacity? Is there a timeline for that or a projected timeline for that?
Yeah, again, speculation at this point, because we haven't had bids and we haven't had those conversations, but we're talking about getting an option agreement in place for probably a three- to five-year period. That would allow a couple of years to finish the due diligence side of things, also have the utility study. The GUC would have to go through a major utility study for their entire system, and also, you know, where these utilities run, how they get there and all that stuff. So, we're talking about a couple of years of just figuring out if the site is viable enough to move to hard infrastructure and actually taking the project to the next level. And the state ultimately has to determine that, because it's, you know, a lot of dollars from the state. But I'll just, you know, end on, the reason why the state is investing that amount of dollars is because of the size of the project. How does the state make money? Income taxes, right? So, if you're talking about thousands of jobs paying a higher wage, that's their self-interest to invest in this, because it's going to provide, it's going to be more than paying for itself over a ten-, twenty-year period, depending on the size of the project. For us, again, economic impact, you can't believe the transformational impact that these projects have. If you look at Greenville, South Carolina with BMW, it completely transformed the community in a positive way for the most part. Now, to say that there's no disruption is not, is not fair, but for this particular site, the idea is we want to work with the community to make as little disruption to the local communities as possible. And I can tell you, in my experience and my position, I've never seen a project like this on one track that has limited, the limit of impact that this one has. So, we're trying our best to minimize it even further, conservation zones, avoiding certain roads, and making sure we're doing the right thing.
Thank you, Josh. No further questions, board? Thank you very much. Mr. Hill, I believe we have some more informational items.
Well, before we move forward, I just want to get clarification on the field trip. Is that something that the board is interested in staff setting up and offering to the board on June 16th is the date that I'm throwing out? It can be whatever date you wish.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we do set up a field trip. Now, with a date, then maybe we'll suit the majority of the board as best we can.
I think time, the time of day that we select is very important to us, most of us.
Yeah, I know personally, I have a conflict for that day, too. Every month.
I'll be in Florida two weeks.
But if, you know, if it's amenable to a number of folks to travel together as a group, that's fine, as far as I'm concerned, it's fine, because I do also drive to the locations that we're looking at.
And I think that's why we canceled the field trips on a standing basis, because a lot of individuals were going on their own. Again, if you want to visit it on your own, staff's fine with that, but I did want to offer the opportunity, if y'all wanted to go with staff as a group, that opportunity. So, it's up to you.
A motion has been presented.
That's anytime after five, but that's working hours in for you guys usually, so.
I, for one, I would like to, like Steve, I'd like to take a field trip here. I've been held up in the past about picking up my granddaughter, because I used to go to all the field trips. She's priority, so she's out of school then, so I'll be good.
And on this particular one, I do believe, and if you go looking at all, that's fine, but just make sure you're looking at where the thousand acres is, the thirty-three-hundred acres are, and realize, too, there's, I believe, Josh, you said eighty-seven-hundred acres? I'd heard ten-thousand acres was all available.
Yeah, Warehouser does under eighty-seven-hundred acres.
Eighty-seven-hundred, okay.
But that would be the advantage of having staff.
That would be the advantage of having the staff alone, okay? To guide.
Definitely, on this type of project.
So, I'm empty motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All righty, Mr. Hardy, thank you.
And can we repeat the motion, just so we're clear on what the motion was?
The motion is that we do schedule a field trip for this particular project.
Do you want to specify a date?
I'm okay whenever you want to do it, okay? But I want as many folks as we can here to be able to know what we're talking about also.
And that date is June 16th?
June 16th.
All right.
Two o'clock.
At two o'clock, 2:00 PM, June 16th, is be a designated field trip for those available to go, can attend. All those in favor of approving this motion, please raise your right hand.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, who did the second? I know he said he wanted to go, but-
Mr. Hardy did.
I did.
All right. Staff will schedule that field trip for June 16th at two o'clock. Please know, anyone who's unable to make that field trip, if you go out to the site yourself and have any questions, feel free to contact staff. We'll be glad to answer any questions, and I would be willing to make arrangements. If you want to go out there by yourself, possibly I can meet you out there and answer any of your questions as well, or another staff member, at your convenience, if you're unable to make that group field trip. So, I think it's important that everyone is aware of what we're talking about and has a good understanding. So, just reach out to our office and let me know if you would like that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is your informational items. Just wanted to go through a few bullet points here. At Monday's commissioners' meeting, the CND landfill rezoning request went before the Board of Commissioners, and they recommended approval of that request. The Happy Trails Farm LLC, that was the mini storage on Worthington Road, that request failed and was not approved by the Board of Commissioners. So, just wanted to update you on those two rezoning requests and actions taken by the Board of Commissioners. Also, wanted to inform you guys, unfortunately, the bad news, that Ms. Naomi Buck, who served many years on our planning board, passed away recently. I've included her obituary in your packet, just making you aware for those of y'all who knew her and worked alongside of her on this board. She was very dedicated and served the citizens of Pitt County in a great way here at the planning board, and we certainly send our condolences to her family and thank her for her time here with us. Also, the departmental monthly report is not included in your packet this month, you might have noticed. We went to a new permitting software, and a lot of the numbers that we use to provide to you in that monthly report, we're having to work through some kinks in that new software to extract those numbers. So, unfortunately, the April monthly report is not included in this, but we will get that report put together and included in next month's packet, hopefully, along with the month of May's report. There's also some articles and correspondences included in your packet as well for your entertainment and reading concerning planning-related matters in your packet. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Does the board have any other issues or questions that they'd like to bring forth? I have a motion to adjourn.
I don't have a question, but I do have just a comment on some of the information that Jonas, you were so good to present to us, or to give to us. But in the last county commissioners' meeting, too, I noticed that under zoning resolution, that they did make, I thought, a pretty good comment, when he said that we have a very diverse state. I'd like to say at the same time, we have a very diverse county, too, to a degree. Different population bases, different needs of use of land, and those decisions are best made by the localities that our citizens elect to serve and make those decisions. Just a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Appreciate your comment. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, and all those in favor? Adjourn.